Good morning, Mr Chairman. When you're ready, we can commence the meeting.
Yes, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this formal meeting of the Environment and Economic Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Ray Wooton and I'm the chairman of the committee. Councillor Martin Greggs, vice-chairman of this committee, is also in attendance. The audio visual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast via the county council's website. I'd like to draw your attention to members of the person public attendants and those who are listening online. I'd like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill planned this morning. In event of the fire alarm sounding, we will need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception to the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park until further instructions. Can I remind everyone to ensure that their mobiles, laptops and iPad are on silent. Before we move on further with the main business of the meeting, can I remind you that if you wish to ask a question during the course of the meeting, can you please raise your hand? Can I also remind members of the committee to switch on their microphones when invited to speak and speak close to the microphone and switch their microphone off after making their contributions. I'd also like to welcome officers presenting today who are participating either live or via Microsoft Teams. Can I ask that you introduce yourself at the beginning of your item or when you make a contribution. To ask questions or contribute during the meeting, please raise your hand virtually or type speak in a chat function. Requests to speak would be collated by the vice-chairman. Please can you keep your questions and contributions succinct and concise. I'd also like to thank Democratic Services, Rob and also Kiara, for their work in organising this meeting and delivery of this meeting this morning. I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome councillor Ian Carrington and councillor Linda Wooton to this meeting as their first formal meeting. Welcome. We will now move on to the formal agenda. Kiara, agenda item one, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Baxter for who we've replaced councillor Cleaver, councillor Hague for who we've replaced councillor Brookway, councillor Taylor for who we've replaced councillor Ashton, councillor Kelly for who we've replaced councillor Clark, and councillor Morgan for who we've replaced councillor Spratt. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to all those who are replacing members today. Item number two, declarations of councillors' interests. Members are required, members are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declarations or pecuniary interest forms. Do any members wish to declare an interest? No? Thank you. Item three, minutes of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of the Environment and Economic Scrutiny Committee held on the 13th of July 2021. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record. We will now vote on the minutes. Do I have a proposer and a seconder? Councillor Bowles, a seconder? Thank you. We will now vote on the minutes. You're voting on whether you agree that the minutes are correct record. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against, and any abstentions. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Those minutes are agreed as a correct and accurate record. I will now sign them. Thank you. Item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. For myself, I'd like to begin by informing members of this committee that myself and councillor Linda Wooton have registered to attend the Lincolnshire Climate Summit 2021, which is taking place on the 13th of October at the Epic Centre Lincolnshire showground. Attendance is open to members of this committee. Should you require any further information, please contact Kiara or scrutiny officer. Moving on, there is a long agenda this morning with one pre-decision item. I would therefore like to ask officers to only summarise the key points of their reports, what is required by the committee and regard to members of the committee, to stress the importance of concise questions and contributions. Executive councillors' announcements, this item is for information only. Should members of the committee wish to ask questions on the announcements, then this can be done outside the formal meeting. Are there any announcements from councillor Colin Davy, executive councillor for economic development, environment and planning? Councillor Davy?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I have a few words I'd like to give to the committee this morning regarding the economy in particular. As we continue to see the local economy recover, we know that we are going to face many more challenges and that growth is not going to be a straight line of improvement. Although I'm sure all of you will welcome the news that business confidence is now at a record high in the United Kingdom. Today, I wanted to, as ever, bring a few headlines to the committee's attention about the work happening across my portfolio, but I also want to focus on the cost of materials, the supply chain issues and labour problems across all sectors. Reflecting on some recent reports, we know that some projects are now becoming unviable or completion dates have increased considerably. A key piece of evidence is the Bays All Work Material Price Index, which has seen an
Plain wood by sixty four point two percent and imported plywood by a staggering eighty one point seven percent. National and local builders, contractors and developers are highlighting these issues and their wider issues with us on a daily basis. For example, Wilmette Dixon have detailed concerns around material availability and cost, which remain fluid with a lack of certainty on cost or delivery. One of their main suppliers have no remaining stock other than long lead in times. Building blocks are now on a twenty five week lead time, roof tosses at fourteen weeks, and some of these shortages and delivery delays will impact on the county council's work, and officers are monitoring this carefully across the authority. For example, delays with deliveries last week impacted on school projects at Bourne and at Spilsby. Similarly, Lincolnshire business Sterling described project lead times as the most challenging factor for them currently. Again, with long lead times, for example, roof tiles at sixteen to twenty two weeks and blocks going out into next year now for orders. I am constantly hearing similar feedback from our growth hub advisors, where businesses are facing challenges, predominantly with supply chains in terms of delivery schedules and prices, but also with recruitment. Officers continue to share business experience with the civil servants in Whitehall, in particular through Bays, to highlight the impact this is having locally. A simple example from last week, a local wine merchant has seen online sales double through the pandemic, but stock lead times have jumped from three weeks to eight weeks. A local timber company has seen prices increase now by three hundred percent. Vacancy rates remain extremely high, of note on the number of adverts in the transport, logistics and warehouse category. We're seeing the highest level of job adverts for this sector at three hundred and twenty nine percent increase on its February twenty twenty average level. Nationally and across sectors, there are one point six six million vacancies, with only one point six million people registered as out of work. These numbers make the work we do on business engagement and skills development even more vital as we look to support business growth. I'm pleased to say the visitor economy businesses are reporting that they have had a good busy summer and have positive booking levels going forward. However, from my experiences of the coast, I have seen businesses having to take on the role of chefs and front of house staff when they've never done that in the past. So business owners are having to fill the posts that they've not been able to recruit. And like we have seen restricted menus, limited opening, and that is a real challenge going forward. The visitors will keep coming because we have a wonderful offer here in Lincolnshire. We've also seen an increase in travel journalists wanting to visit the county. Some of these have come via the journalist area on the new Visit Lincolnshire website and some via the efforts of our PR consultant. The Tourism Commission delivery money means that we have a PR ground handling service with Visit Lincoln, and although it only began at the beginning of August, it is working very well. Also part of the Tourism Commission work is the Green Tourism Toolkit, which I'm pleased to say is now out for procurement. I know this is going to be very popular with our businesses. Indeed, the net zero agenda is being raised more frequently from businesses across sectors needing to make investments in order to meet targets. One local manufacturer this week has highlighted a significant impact of net zero as investment in new machinery will be needed to meet the new carbon targets. There is a growing interest from business in the county council's climate change summit on the thirteenth of October and COP twenty six in November. I am pleased you and your wife are joining that event. I encourage all members of this committee to also attend if they can. Businesses can now access one to one specialist support through the Growth Hub's Resource Efficiency Advisor and through the Business Lincolnshire website. There are also numerous business focused events being held through September, October and November, including a visit from the Carbon Battle Bus to Lincoln on the twenty seventh of September, as it travels around the country promoting the race to zero in the run up to COP twenty six. Elsewhere, we are continuing to bring about real change for a range of businesses, and I always like to bring you a couple of examples. I'm delighted to say that a hundred and fifteen projects supported through the Rural Business Grant have received their first payments, and a significant number have claimed and completed their projects. A couple I will now mention. Firstly, Kingswood Coffee at Digbing received a grant of thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty four pounds. This business changed their business models to be adaptive to a post Covid economy and to become sustainable. And the applicant to that grant has reported back to us, and I quote, "It is exciting times for our business, which through this grant has put us nearly two years ahead of schedule with our growth through investment in equipment, and we are extremely grateful for this opportunity." And secondly, Iron Horse Ranch House received a grant of twenty three thousand six hundred and eighty two pounds to fund the purchase of a marquee, chairs and outdoor heaters. The scale and impact of this one was marked, increasing from fifty to a hundred and fifty eight covers overnight. The applicant has again fed back, and I quote, "The space has allowed us to comfortably host our visitors, no matter the restrictions in place, as we have had the space and flexibility to cope with all the various demands from social distancing to table service and the encouragement of outside dining." We're getting really positive comments about the space, how safe people feel and the benefits to the local community. Coming to a drawing to a close, work on the coast continues with the ongoing delivery of the Coastal Communities Fund Programme and the appointment of the National Coastal Tourism Academy and the launch of some far reaching research into careers and business skills on the coast. It has emerged that the Lincolnshire coast is the more seasonal than other seaside locations, and we do need to address this in the years going forward. And finally, on investment propositions, as part of our drive to entice further investment into the region, a series of investment propositions are being developed in partnership with all of our local partners and stakeholders. We have recently published our fourth investment proposition in logistics. The other three include agri-food, advanced engineering and manufacturing, low carbon energy and industry. Visitor economy and defence for development with further propositions in health and life sciences, digital technology and a brochure on place. These propositions showcase the region's offer, comparing us with the UK and neighbouring regions, telling investors about our skilled workforce and the outstanding R and D capabilities located across the whole of Greater Lincolnshire. They are already proving to be invaluable in our talks with investors, and please share widely with businesses already located here and also any investors businesses might be looking to locate here. Since April twenty one, we have received fifty three inward investment inquiries, with forty being from foreign investors and thirteen from the UK. They are from a diverse range of sectors, with twenty two being from the agri-food sector. Since showcasing our region's high potential opportunity for automation in the food processing sector to the Department of International Trade's global network in May of this year, we are also now attracting a number of inquiries from food related automation and robotics companies. One of these companies, which is Canadian owned, is in the process of signing a virtual tenancy at Eventus Business Centre to enable them to have a presence in the county prior to physically landing here. An investor focused webinar will be held in October with the Department of International Trade to further promote the opportunities of Lincolnshire around the globe. At that point, Chairman, I will stop, and thank you for your time and indulgence, and members, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Colton, for a very interesting and comprehensive update. We'll then move on. Senior officers, are there any senior officers announcements you wish to make this morning? No, thank you. We now move on to the next item, substantive item of the agenda, which is the invitation to join a geological disposal facility working group in eastern Lincolnshire. This is a pre-decision item on radioactive waste management invitation extended to Lincolnshire County Council to join a working group to explore further whether eastern Lincolnshire and the former Thedlethorpe Gas Terminal site in particular would be an appropriate location for a geological disposal facility. This report will be presented by Justin Brown, Assistant Director of Growth, who is in attendance today. The views this committee will be reported to the executive when it considers it's its decision on the fifth of October twenty twenty one. Justin, over to you.
Chairman, thank you. And as you say, this is a report for prior scrutiny, and colleagues in democratic services will indeed note comments and feed them back to the executive. As you say, the report concerns the invitation that has been made to the county council by Radioactive Waste Management Limited. Their invitation is for us to join a working group to explore whether eastern Lincolnshire and Thedlethorpe Gas Terminal in particular could be the location for a geological disposal facility. From the outset, I would stress two points. Firstly, that joining the working group does not mean that LCC supports the concept of a geological disposal facility. And secondly, the working group is not where any decision about locating a geological disposal facility would be taken. It's the local community through a public test of support who would determine whether a geological disposal facility should be located in the area. So in terms of the report, you will see that on face value, the geology of eastern Lincolnshire appears to be suitable for a geological disposal facility, and that is why RWM Limited contacted us and contacted East Lindsay District Council. The site of the former terminal is owned by National Grid, and the gas terminal has been an asset to Lincolnshire, providing employment, business opportunities, and one of the reasons for investment in flood defences on the coast. We've advocated to National Grid that the site should continue to be used as an asset to Lincolnshire, and we're aware of other commercial energy interests in the site as well as that of RWM. So RWM are leading a government sponsored project to deliver a geological disposal facility. The aim of the project is to dispose of the UK's higher activity waste deep underground safely and permanently, and what the UK government is seeking to do is similar to that which is being done in other countries around the world. On page twenty two of the report, Chairman, you'll see the RWM initial analysis, which demonstrates that eastern Lincolnshire's conditions appear to be favourable and that there could be the option for the waste to be buried offshore. RWM have indicated to us that a geological disposal facility could provide over a thousand construction jobs and then several hundred permanent technical and skilled jobs, and that it would also include investment in the area's infrastructure, flood management, transport infrastructure, road improvements and potentially training and skills. And all of that analysis will need to be verified. So the paper concerns the invitation that RWM have made to LCC to join the working group, and a working group is part of a very defined government process, which is concerned with establishing and assembling all of the facts. The committee will be able to see on pages twenty three and twenty four the exact purpose of a working group and the exact purpose of a community partnership, should the working group choose to establish one. Not only do the groups assemble information, they also have clear responsibilities to advise on infrastructure, to set and shape the community development grants that are provided, and to establish a community vision which identifies the infrastructure that an area would require. As I previously said, that infrastructure could include flood management, transport infrastructure, road improvements and training and skills investment. And we know that the East Lindsay economy requires investment. Businesses tell us that their growth is affected by their distance from the markets and by the time it takes to travel. Long term youth unemployment in the area is high, and the number of jobs outside the tourism industry is limited. The community vision will stress those aspects which could have a significant benefit to the local community, and if the county council chooses to accept the invitation to join the working group, then I could envisage a discussion about the priorities that LCC would want to advocate for a community vision taking place within this committee. Crucially though, the community partnership, if it is formed, has the responsibility to make recommendations to the relevant principal local authorities on whether to invoke the right of withdrawal and if and when to launch a test of public support. So I reiterate the two points I made earlier. Joining the working group does not mean that LCC supports the concept of a geological disposal facility, and the local community through a public test of support will determine whether a geological disposal facility should be located in the area. The working group and the community partnership, if it subsequently formed, are critical to decisions about whether such a facility should go ahead, and they're also critical to providing the right investment if one were to be supported through the public test of support. Given the county council's responsibilities concerning place, the environment and the economy, then I would recommend that the county council joins the working group and if one is formed, the community partnership. And related to the previous point, if the executive decides to join the working group, then the county council's membership on those groups should be a representative who can provide a clear overview of the factors which affect the whole area, the interests of the Lincolnshire public and the investment requirements of the county. So in summary, Chairman, the working group and the community partnership, if it is subsequently formed, are critical to decisions about whether a geological disposal facility should go ahead, and they're also critical to providing the right investment if the geological disposal facility were to be supported through the public test of support. Given the county council's responsibilities concerning place, the environment and the economy, then the paper has three recommendations. That the executive approves acceptance by the council of the invitation from Radioactive Waste Management Limited to join a working group, which will explore the potential for a geological disposal facility in eastern Lincolnshire. That the executive approves the council taking up membership of any subsequent community partnership that may be formed, and that the executive identifies a councillor to represent the council on the working group and, if it is formed, the community partnership. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Justin. Before we move on, as chairman of this committee, I am a great believer in freedom of speech and also of peaceful protest. With that in mind, on your behalf, I approach the campaign group of the Thedlethorpe and Maplesworth campaign, and I've asked and requested a member of that group to speak. I'm pleased to say that that has been accepted this morning, and Mr Ken Smith will speak for three minutes on their behalf. Mr Smith, over to you.
Well, thank you all for inviting me here today. I'm pleased to have the chance to actually address you. My problems come really from the uncertainty all of this is going to generate. The East of England Geological Survey reveals that there are coal deposits below the proposed site. It goes against RWM's guidelines for a GDF to be located where there are other sources of energy because of the danger to future generations. We have no way of knowing what may happen in the future, but if later generations are hungry for energy, they are likely to drill through the GDF to get to it. Likewise, they are not supposed to locate it where there has been drilling for fossil fuels, because this changes the way the water moves through the ground. The suggested place is in the middle of the now exhausted Thedlethorpe gas field and right next to the Saltfleet Be Gas Field, so there has been drilling. This means that they are only likely to choose Thedlethorpe if everyone else has turned them down. However, if we go ahead with a working party, we are signalling to the world that the GDF in Thedlethorpe is a real possibility, and as soon as we do that, the problems start. We have already had reports from estate agents of sales being cancelled, and that's just the beginning. The thing is that business people hate, what they hate most is uncertainty. They like to plan five to 10 years ahead. They can't do that with the GDF hanging over them like the sword of Damocles. The leisure industry puts seven hundred and seventy three million pounds into the East Lindsay economy every year. These businesses are unlikely to invest in leisure and tourism with the possibility of a GDF being placed on their doorstep. RWM assures us that the GDF is safe, and it may be true, but the public's perception is that nothing nuclear is safe. In the ten to fifteen years it takes for RWM to make up their minds, our tourist industry may well die, and there is every likelihood that at the end of that, RWM will just walk away. The proposal is not a matter of we could lose tourism and gain extra jobs from RWM, it's a matter of we could lose tourism and gain absolutely nothing. So, to my view, ladies and gentlemen, you're taking a huge gamble, and it's not one that I would be prepared to take myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Smith. Thank you very much. I'm now going to move on to members of the committee to ask questions. Mr Smith, could I ask you to remove yourself to the gallery upstairs, please? And thank you very much indeed for coming this morning. So I'm now going to invite members of the committee to comment. councillor Griggs, do we have anybody who wants to speak? councillor Griggs.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Firstly, I'd like to thank Mr Smith for putting his point across. I'm not an expert in geology and I don't claim to be one. He raised some really interesting points, many of which I agree with. However, I still come out a different outcome to that that Mr Smith does. If we turn to page twenty five of the report, we see that while there is no requirement for the council to join the working group, it's the government's preference, and if we go through that, it basically says that if we don't join, it means you still go ahead anyway, but we won't have the ability to influence and discuss with residents and actually have all the knowledge and information that they need from us. And I think it's extremely poignant that we take a view that we don't support it or not support it, it is completely up to the residents. They are the people it will have the biggest impact on, and in my mind, that's what it says in the report, is that essentially the decision comes down to whether the residents locally want it, and I think we should be in a position to facilitate helping them make that decision, be it to support it or not, it makes no difference to me. You know, we all know that ELDC, along with Boston, have some of the highest areas of deprivation in the county. This potentially is a chance to address some of those, and potentially not, but again, it's up to those residents. So, in my mind, I think that it's something that we most definitely should support the recommendations of, but take no view on whether we support the actual facility going ahead, and that we do everything we can to support the residents to ensure they have the correct information, all of the information, so that they can make a fair and balanced decision.
Thank you very much indeed. The next speaker I have is councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. To form an opinion, the water needs clearing over this. Reading the report, I'd like to know how long discussions have been going on with radioactive waste management? Have they been going on just started? Have they been going on a year, et cetera? The reasons for the recommendations include in representing the county and its requirements. This gives the impression of the county benefits outweighing the views of the local community. Therefore, when we talk about the views of the community, what area are we actually talking about? Why is the views of the community not taken into account before the whole issue starts? And, you know, I can accept what everyone says about the working group, but at one stage, you're going to be so far down the line, there's going to be no return. There's nothing in the report at all, there's a lot about benefits, there's nothing at all about the risk. What I would like to see, and I'd like to know the answer to that at this meeting, is in the purpose of the working group, can it be included that total involvement with the local community, what was said by Mr Smith, the effects of the reputation of the wider community, will holidaymakers still wish to come to Lincolnshire knowing the perception of nuclear waste is there? And the safety issue of not only to the site, but also transporting the materials? But like I said, I'm unsatisfied with the way the report's written because it steers everyone to the benefits and not the disadvantages. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark. Justin, are you to answer a few of those questions?
By all means, Chairman. So, the process which is being undertaken is one which is very clearly prescribed by government in the document which we attached to the report. And councillor Clark asks about the location of the community, and the very detailed report that governments have produced specifically describe the location as district council level wards in which the following are located: proposed surface development, associated development, transport links and direct physical impacts. The point councillor Clark raises around ensuring that information is properly available to the public is critical, and that is an important part of the terms of reference of any working group. And as you will see from the analyses of impacts that we put at the end of the report, there will be certain things that the county council would expect to introduce if the terms of reference were not to include them, and those would include items like ensuring that there is equality of access to information.
Thank you very much indeed, Justin. Councillor Clark, do you have any supplementary questions at all?
The question is still outstanding. We may, you know, in the report, it clearly says the local community. Why waste or go through fifteen years of negotiation when clearly you can go to the local community now and find out the answer?
The proposal that RWM make includes following a very defined process by government, which includes certain steps, and that process recognises the importance of listening to all voices in the community from the outset.
Thank you very much indeed. The next speaker I've got is councillor Bowles. councillor Bowles?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the two points I wanted to make have been made by the previous two speakers. So I do, you know, I echo what councillor Griggs says, my main concern was originally that if LCC don't join this group, this group will go ahead, from my understanding of reading the paper, and LCC will not be around the table to influence, shape, take part in any discussions and represent residents and businesses, et cetera. So that would be a concern, but I'll do also echo the comments of councillor Clark about the community involvement in it, and I do note in the paper, it does state that in other parts of the country, parish, town councils, local relevant bodies have been part of these working groups, but there's no mention of that within this paper. It mentions LCC and East Lindsay. I would like to think that if LCC are going to be a part of it, we would be arguing the case that those local town and parish councils should also be a part of the working group as well. So I would be more happy supporting us joining it if we ensure that the local community are represented as well through the town and parish councils and any other, you know, various groups, interested bodies as part of the working group as well. So I would urge the executive to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, can you answer those questions, please?
So that is something that I will work with democratic services on to ensure we feed that to the executive in their taking their decision.
Thank you very much indeed. The next speaker I have is councillor Jackie Brockaway.
Thank you, Chairman. Somebody gave me a maxim a while ago that knowledge is power, and I think that's very true. This is a situation where we need to know what's going on. As far as I'm concerned, we absolutely have to have a seat at that working group. It is not our working group, we are being invited to join, and if we don't go, then this county council, which represents the whole the whole county and is very much part of the community, will be shut out from not all knowledge, because of course we'll get feedback and things like that, but we won't be there at the table to see the subtleties and the nuances of what people think. And I think it is very, very important to be there. In response to something that councillor Clark said, in my division some time ago, we had a similar situation with fracking. They wanted to bring the frackers in, and a similar process for the community, as is happening here, happened then. They did come in, they did go a long way down the road, and they went away again because the site wasn't suitable. And there were a lot of perceptions of fear, which I shared, you know, it's my division, my community. But we were included and we were involved. And actually, being involved and being round the table was of significant importance. So it is my intention to vote for this. My feeling is we must be there. But I agree very much with what councillor Bowles said about, you know, we must make sure that the local community is there, and this business of transparency is vital in a situation like this. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brockway. Our next speaker is councillor Carrington. Councillor Carrington?
Thank you very much, Chairman. And I would send councillor Griggs his thanks to our officers for preparing the report. Is that better? I would thank, as councillor Griggs did, our officers for preparing the report, and also to Mr Smith for bringing his points to our attention. Chairman, it seems to me that the matter is both complex and simple. Does that sound a little better? It's both complex and simple. It is a very, very complex project. It is a very simple question before us. Do we or do we not join the working group? We are not, as we have heard, going to be the decision maker. That decision, whether to put the site forward, will be taken by the local people, and it is not for us to subvert or try and replace the decision which they will take. In terms of the question, do we join or not join, it seems to me a sensible way of thinking about this is to ask ourselves what would happen if we do not join the working group. Well, the geology is not going to change. The requirement for the long-term storage of nuclear waste is not going to change, and the project, as we have heard, is not going to stop. The only difference would be that Lincolnshire as a whole will not have a voice, and those local residents who will take the decision will not have our support. And I feel very passionately that we do have to be there to help our local residents when they need us most. There are indeed tough questions to be asked about this project, and it seems to me that this council's weight should be used to ensure that those questions are asked and that answers are given. There are implications of this, both positive and negative, which are countywide. They go well beyond Seddlethorpe or the immediate environs. And we have to be there. We can't do a Pontius Pilate and look the other way. I think we have a duty to ensure that the local people who will make the decision are given the support that they deserve and the information that they need. Chairman, I would conclude on a personal note. It's often put by people on one side of this argument or the other, well, would you want a nuclear facility next door to you? Well, I can speak with some personal experience of that, because I have lived next to not one, but two nuclear storage facilities. I spent most of my childhood in West Cumberland. Sellafield, which some of you may know as Calder Hall or Windscale, Sellafield was a very dominant thing. The towers, now largely demolished, dominated the landscape where I lived, a couple of miles from the plant. That was the site of the first high-level nuclear waste storage facility in this country. And the other end of the village where I lived was the site of, and still is the site of, the first low-level nuclear facility. So the question of what is it like to live next to these things is not some abstract debating point for me. I have personal experience of that throughout my childhood and where my parents lived for forty years. And I have to say, there was no noticeable impact on tourism to the Western Lake District from either of those facilities being there. Turning our backs on this will not magic away the fact that we need to find a safe way of disposing nuclear waste. It won't make the issue go away. We have a duty, it seems to me, a duty of care, a duty to investigate, and a duty to support our residents. So I think that, as other colleagues have said, we have to take part in the working group. We're not saying we support or don't support the project, but we must take part in the working group and find out more. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Jodie. Councillor Carrington. My next speaker is councillor Cleaver. Councillor Cleaver?
Thank you. Could I just ask for some clarification regarding the terms of reference of this working group? I notice in the report, they're not actually set out, so we're not actually being given a formal set of terms of reference, which we know we are signing up for. We simply have a process of local engagement and a statement, a description of the main functions of a working group. So does that imply that once the working group is established, it will set its own terms of reference? Could I have some clarification on that, please?
Justin, thank you.
There are detailed sets of information in the attached government document about shape of the terms of reference. I believe it is best practice in any meeting that whilst there is a framework of terms of reference, if a member of a group, in this case, the working group, felt there was something that needed to be added to the terms of reference, then that is something that should be considered in one of the early meetings of that group. But the information about the broad terms of reference and the proposed terms of reference by government is attached in the attached policy paper.
Thank you. Councillor Cleaver, do you have another question?
Please, if I may. So, on that basis then, once the working group has established its terms of reference, they could be brought back to this committee for this committee's approval? And secondly, can I ask whether the working group will be subject to the Freedom of Information Act?
I will seek clarification on the second point, because I don't have it immediately to hand, and it is a critical point. So I will confirm that to members of the group. I think councillor Cleaver has raised an important point about ongoing communication. The working group itself should agree its terms of reference. However, I think there's a very important point, which is about transparency, as I believe councillor Brockway said earlier. And certainly, we would want to discuss with RWM Limited to make sure that information about progress is something which is shared widely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jodie. The next speaker I have is councillor Ashton.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. It seems to me that we are taking the very first step on what from these papers appears to be an incredibly long journey. And we don't know actually where that journey will take us, because the final decision on that destination will be a community decision. And that's only right, in my mind, that the community has the opportunity to take a fully informed decision when that decision is taken. We've heard that there may well be transformational levels of local investment, there may well be transformational improvements in flood management in rail transport, but we don't know. And the community doesn't know, and these things need to be understood in the same way that the entirely valid issues and questions that Mr Smith rightly raised, that the way to get to the bottom of those, the way to get the answers in an open and transparent way, is through engagement with a working group, and engagement in the community partnership, so that these issues are rightly and properly and fully understood when that decision comes to be taken by the local community several years from now. And simply on that basis, as other speakers have made their points very eloquently, it is right that we are at the table, that we have a role in that process, and to ensure that the community, when it takes its decision, whichever decision it arrives at, it does so fully informed. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, Jodie. I have one more speaker. Are there any other councillors who have not spoken who wish to speak? Thank you. I've got councillor Spratt next. Thank you.
Pardon me. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I agree with pretty much most of what my colleagues have said. There was an interesting point that councillor Clark made. It's the first time I've ever heard anything go to any committee where you want to find out the answer before the actual evidence has been presented. My very good friend councillor Fleetwood will tell you, was the chairman of the planning committee, if ever you have anybody wanting to build anything anywhere, if you went straight to the residents that live opposite, they would say, we don't want it, whatever it be, whether it be a housing estate, whether it be a digester at Saxallby, or whatever. And I think it's very important, as councillor Carrington correctly said, we need to engage fully in this process. Because if we don't, there is a danger it may go ahead in any event. And I think we, as the council, the lead body here, we need to engage fully with the community, as indeed councillor Clark did say, but we need to engage with the community before we come to any proper conclusions. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, indeed. And the last speaker is councillor Fleetwood. Councillor Fleetwood?
Thank you. Yes, my name's been alluded to. I did put my name down beforehand, though, having said that, yes, I am chairman of the planning committee, but I don't think it precludes me from speaking to this item. My view, I think it's said by many people already, is that it's far better to be inside of the meeting and looking at the information. Many years ago, if we were in the civil war, you'd be inside the tent, and it's far better to be inside the tent, gaining the information and looking out, rather than being on the outside looking in. And typically, the case must be that if you're inside the tent and you're looking out, you can be picking up the information, some of it can be confidential, some of it can be other items, and at any stage you can walk away from it. But if you, once you've established that you're outside and you're looking in, it will be very hard to go in and gain that information. So it's better off to start in a situation where if you're going to have a powwow around the campfire, however you want to put it, you are taking the information as best as you can, and you are at the table, taking that information.
Thank you, councillor Fleetwood. I'm going to sum up now. We've had some really good discussions this morning. Every councillor has, for one, has contributed. And thank you, Justin, for your comments and your views. May I thank the protesters, and also Ken Smith, for speaking on behalf of the protesters this morning? Thank you for your cooperation, and thank you for attending today. I'm now going to the actions. I've been told that councillor Inderwiddon wants to speak now.
Thank you, Chairman. As you named me, I think it's quite important that I do speak. I would like to pay tribute to all those members of the public that have lobbied us. I, for one, benefited from their feelings, and I understand their feelings. But my colleague behind me had a good analogy. I do think that we need to be at the table, we need to participate, and I, for one, agree with that. Thank you, Chairman. I'm sorry to have upset your speech there.
No problem at all. Justin, you wanted to come back. Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. Just to reassure councillor Cleaver, we've just checked terms of reference of one of the working groups elsewhere in the country, and freedom of information does form part of their operations.
Thank you very much, Jodie. Justin, right, if we go to the actions, the committee is invited to, one, consider the attached report and to determine whether it supports the recommendations to the executive on page twenty of the report; two, agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive. I therefore move that the committee supports the proposed recommendations and agrees to pass on our comments to the executive. Do I have a second, or councillor Brockway? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Any abstentions? That therefore is pass. What I propose to do now is to have a ten-minute break before we move on to the second item. Thank you. I still intend to finish by one o'clock, so hopefully we'll be as quick as possible
I still intend to finish by one o'clock, so hopefully we'll be as quick as possible going through these items, but obviously scrutinise them carefully, but be quick. The next item on the agenda is the service level performance reporting against the Performance Framework 2122 Quarter One. This item is on pages 31 to 46 of the Agenda Pack and brings together the Quarter One Performance for Economy, Flooding and Waste. The report will be presented by Justin Brown, Assistant Director for Growth, David Hickman, Head of Environment, Mike Reed, Head of Waste, who are all attending by teams. Justin, over to you, thank you.
Chairman, thank you. So we have four economy performance measures which are related to job creation, skills, business support and external funding attracted. And we tend to report on business supported and on funding attracted every quarter, but on qualifications and on jobs twice a year because the situation does not change as quickly and because we have to capture certain amounts of data to make the information worthwhile. So in terms of business supported, I'm pleased to say that we have substantially exceeded the target. That is mainly as a result of the Covid Business Recovery Grant that you as a council introduced. We are going through the process at the moment of making final payments and we are seeing some applicants able to take the grant, but some are not taking the grant because their cost of material and supply has increased to an extent that their business opportunity is no longer viable. And that relates to some of the things councillor Davy said at the start of the meeting. So I would intend to be able to produce for you probably the next time we have this report, a summary by district area of the distribution of those grants. And I know councillor Clark has asked for that, so we will get it for you. In terms of the second main performance indicator that we have that we report quarterly, it is external funding attracted. And we are behind in terms of time, not necessarily in terms of volume. So when you bid for funding, you submit your bid into the government and then you are then reliant on their processes to confirm whether you've got the money or not. So we've attracted some funding over the past quarter, but not as much as we'd hoped. And that is because our bids are sitting on a table in Whitehall, not because we did not make the bids. So the Community Renewal Fund, which is mentioned on page 32, is a bid process where we had four weeks, we turned around an enormous programme of activities, lots of people across the whole of the place director at working on projects, local colleges, local voluntary organisations, et cetera. We were told that we would know whether the funding had been approved by the end of July. I'm sitting here today and I still do not know. And the delays are becoming very frustrating to us, but very difficult for those people who we were hoping to assist. So when I talk about not hitting the external funding target, it's not about volume, as I say, it's about time. So those are the two indicators that I need to report on today, councillor Wotton. So if it's okay with you, I'll hand straight over to David to mention flooding.
Thank you very much indeed, Justin. I'm now going to open it up for questions to you before I move on. Any questions from members of the committee? Councillor Brockway.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you ever so much for this paper. It's very interesting. I really appreciate the graphics actually, because it does make it easy to pick up. I noticed that recycling rates are not quite what they have been. And I'm very much a passionate recycler. I mean, every bit of cardboard gets separated and every button gets taken off for reusing. So I'm very into this stuff. And I wonder, given that certainly on my Facebook pages, I'm seeing people worried about queues and things at the recycling centres, how can we help and encourage people to get back into their own patterns of old patterns of recycling a little more? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Are you over to answer the question, Justin?
I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Mike Reed, the Head of Waste, who I know will update you on the indicators in a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Cleaver.
Thank you. In relation to the amount of external funding attracted to Lincolnshire, I noticed that when this committee met in September 2017, the figure was 32 million and it's now 2.8 million. Could you tell us why there's such a big difference?
It all depends on which funding programmes the government are operating at any one time. So back in 2017, there was a particular spike relating to LEAP funding and to government regeneration funding. So the sort of things that we attracted, that paid for the food enterprise zone in Hull Beach, that paid for opening up some of the industrial land at Teal Park just outside Lincoln, and many other projects. That funding is now closed and the amount of funding that we are bidding for is substantially less. So what we did discuss back in, oh, I don't know, 2016, 2015 perhaps, was seeing if we could produce a profile so that you could see what the funding looked like, and then you would be able to see what we were bidding against. Now, I'm hopeful that when the government's levelling up white paper is introduced, which should be in October, he says with his fingers crossed, that we will get an assessment of the profile of funding that will be available for regeneration over the next four years. And then probably we can do that profile, which will enable us to say, are we doing well or not?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Griggs.
Yeah, it's a question continuing on the same vein as the funding. Obviously, I'm aware that at district level, we apply and are at the minute extremely successful on achieving vast quantities of funding compared to historic trends. With the county, is it the case of the funding's just not there to apply for? We don't have the manpower to apply for it, or we're not being successful? Could you give us a bit more breakdown as to how that data works?
Yeah. So one of the things that the government did round about a year ago was change the way that they would distribute funding. So for a long time, a significant amount of funding was distributed through local enterprise partnerships. And we, partly because we are the accountable body for the local enterprise partnership, and partly because we have a very active and effective external funding team, were able to attract more than Lincolnshire's fair share. So of the 39 LEAPs in the country at the time, we got the fifth biggest amount of funding and our LEAP is something like about the eighth smallest. So we were pleased with success. Things have moved on. Government is now routing some of its funding, notably Towns Fund and Future High Street Fund, through district councils. Future High Street Fund was a competition. The government then, after the competition ended, reduced funding across the board to applicant areas. And in fact, some didn't receive funding at all. For Towns Fund, it was an allocation when the town investment plan was approved. And I think, you know, we look at the Towns Fund allocations in Greater Lincolnshire and it's great that we've got that funding. It's not something my team were involved with, but we're pleased to see our colleagues in the district councils get it. We are expecting Community Renewal Fund to translate into something called Shared Prosperity Fund, and we expect that to be something that county councils will be bidding for on behalf of the area. What we are currently doing is making sure we do have the right manpower with the right skills to be able to bid for that funding if and when it appears.
Thank you very much indeed, Justin. Any further questions before I move on to David? No. David, are you next?
Thank you, chairman, yes. So, members will see on page 33, a brief description of the indicator that we are looking out for flood risk this quarter. It covers particularly the formal requirement on the county council to undertake investigations of incidents of flooding as part of its role as lead local flood authority. And there are a number of other important aspects to that role, but this is the particular part that's being examined by this particular indicator. It is a contextual indicator in many respects. We can't unfortunately yet control rainfall or the weather, so the incidence of it throughout the year actually builds up over a period of time to give us a broader context and a broader evidence base of the kind of patterns of weather that we've experienced over a number of years and gives us a sense in so that we can plan a bit more effectively for the future based on averages. If I can draw your attention to the to the graphics slightly later in the report, on page... Get there in a moment. Yeah, here we go. On pages 39 and following, you'll see that in the first quarter of this financial year, so April, May and June, we only had three incidents of flooding that required us to begin a formal investigation. It has been an unusually dry year so far, and I won't say anymore because I don't want to tempt fate. But this is one of the things where this service is particularly affected by the vagaries of the weather. So if we look a little bit further down on the following page, you'll see there that put into context over the past few years. So the first diagram at the top of the page there shows you the quarterly statistics over the last few years. And you can see there just how the incidence of flooding investigations varies from quarter to quarter. And the diagram below that again, which collates those into annual totals, again shows you just how much from year to year the impacts on us vary. So you'll see very, very clearly there the impacts of the flooding in 2019, which started really in the middle of the year and carried on more or less towards September and October. And that particularly included the very well-known incident down at Wainfleet, but also numerous other incidents scattered across scattered across the county. So that has given us a backlog of investigations that we are still trying to clear at the moment. We are working as fast as hard as we can, but it does, it certainly has put a little bit of pressure on resources. As I say, so far this year, it's been relatively quiet, but I'm not, I'm not taking that as red for the rest of the year. So happy to take any questions on that on that measure, chairman.
Yes, thank you, David. Just before I go on to questions, a village which I cover, Ancaster, wanted to be to pass on their thanks to Lincolnshire County Council for the work they took in relation to flash flooding a few months ago. And although it didn't enter their property, sandbags were issued very quickly and prevented what could have been a real disaster for their village. But thank you. Councillor Fleetwood.
Thank you, yes. I'm very pleased that Mr Hickman's alluded to the fact that this report is for the first quarter of the year because although we talk in terms of it being dry and it's raining outside and forecast fairly heavy today, if you go back to July 30th, which is six weeks ago, there was a cloud burst on the eastern side of Lincoln. Some of the roads had a foot plus of water on them, and the issue continued to go forward. On the way to the meeting this morning, I bumped into Anglia Water representatives who were checking to see if roof water was going into the sewers as well as standard rainfall. But the issue attached to all of this is this is a report of section 19 reporting, and it's the near misses that concerns me. And section 19 reporting only monitors water that goes inside a dwelling. It doesn't monitor water that goes inside people's garages, sheds, or indeed, it's not quite so clear with regard to conservatories. So it's all of those very near misses that need to be taken into account. And if I go back to July 30th as the example, I can come up with, as an example in Cherry Willingham, 20-plus properties. I can go to Fiskerton, where I went to a parish council last night, and they were telling me about water going through properties. And those are all through garages. And these are all near misses but not reported. So I think we need to do something with regard to data, data collection for all of those situations where it's very, very close but not quite inside properties. So I think that's where we need to be going in the near future.
Yeah, councillor Fleetwood, you're quite correct. I remember a few years ago in the village of Manthor, there was quite substantial flooding from River Wytham, although the fact that water didn't enter their property, their homes, they weren't classified as a statistic. So you're quite correct. David, do you want to comment on that, please?
If I may, chairman. There is a reference to this to this issue in the report. We have been discussing this issue of the near miss as opposed to the formal requirement under law on the county council. We do now collect that near miss data, and that provides us with a richer and a deeper context for the information that we get out of the section 19 reports and that we also can now use to inform our future planning for for works on the ground. What I would say is that we do encourage members and local communities to report all flooding to us so that we can get a much clearer and more comprehensive view of those of those near misses.
Thank you very much indeed. Any more questions before I move on to the next heading? Justin, do you know who's reporting for the waste? Is it Mike Reed?
It's Mike Reed and he's ready on MS Teams, chairman.
Okay. Mike, are you there?
I am indeed, councillor. Thank you for that and good morning, everyone. So there are three targets which we report on waste, the first of which is the recycling rate at household waste recycling centres. And this is somewhat distorted by the last 15, 16 months where we've operated a booking system at the HWRCs, which have put a lot of restrictions in place and limited the number of residents which we allow through the gates. The consequence of this is that we feel that the, well, there is a demonstration that the amount of material is a lot lower than historically to be expected. And also because of the handling issue with the Covid pandemic, material has not been sorted out and segregated as it should be. Therefore, the recycling rate is slightly lower than what the target is. It's round about 73.16%. And it should be expected to be around a target of 75%. However, this is this is lower. However, I think it's better to accept that it could have been a lot worse. And I think it's something that we are expecting to change now that we are moving, we have moved the system and the booking system has stopped at all our sites as of the 1st of September. And it's resurfaced back to the historical model where people don't have to book. And we're expecting far more numbers and hopefully far better recycling at HWRCs. So that's a difficult picture to paint at the moment, but we're hoping in the next few months, we will have a better idea of where our actual recycling rates are and could be. So that's the first item. The second item which I'm reporting on is the actual recycling rate across all municipal waste. So this is curbside, HWRCs and other avenues. And this is this is still lower than the actual target, pretty much for the similar reasons as I've just stated. We have a lot of people obviously working from home. This has distorted how much recycling has taken place because if people are working from home, there are less opportunities for recycling at premises. Whereas if people present material at our facilities, that should help recycling rates overall. So it's pretty much the same picture for both items. And the third item is simply a total volume, a total tonnage measure of household waste collected, which the target is round about 1,000 kilograms per household per year. And we are below that target, meeting our projected requirement. However, the caveat is that obviously things are very different from when these targets were set. So we don't have a proper picture as to where we could be at this point in time because the benchmarks are very different because of the, obviously the pandemic. But in responding to councillor Brockway's question previously about encouraging recycling, it's something that we are very mindful of and we are working continuously with different campaigns. We have a new right We have a new right bin right thing campaign, which which is all about informing the public where material should go. We are looking to further improve paper and card collection across the county. We've had a recent rollout of a separate bin in in Boston and just happening at the moment in Northkesteven, which should help with contamination. And also we have set up a team which is monitoring and analysing material to establish if there are any patterns with with where contamination occurs and and how we can better inform the public. I think it's it's one thing that we we can't force this on the public, but I think it's it's a lot of it is around communication and education and working closer and better with the public, realising that we are in partnership. And it's something that we we maybe have neglected in the past. But I think in in recent times, we have looked to kind of increase the the number of initiatives that we have and and realise that we do have to work closely with the public. So it's something that we are continually looking to develop. And I think that is everything that I'd like to say, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to open it up to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. I just want to open up for questions. Could you tell me, have you had much feedback on the opening up from September at the Household Waste Centres without booking?
Only the feedback that we've seen so far as being on on social media regarding the the waiting times and the queuing times at certain sites, I think it's it's frustrating, if not a little bit predictable. We people are there and very eager to use our facilities and unfortunately we can't control where people want to present their materials. However, what it does demonstrate is that these are very popular facilities. And we are hopeful that if if the numbers that we're seeing through the gates actually materialise in terms of a better recycling rate, I think that that is one thing that we we have kind of hoped for that will occur. I think we haven't received, personally haven't seen any negative feedback or any complaints about what what the changes have kind of thrown up. I think it might be a matter of time before we do get some complaints or positivity. But so far, I think anecdotally, people are happy at being able to have the flexibility to present the material as and when they can. However, you know, we don't have a full picture of it kind of what the public opinion is, except when when things tend to go wrong. And inevitably, we do face face queues that we're facing at popular, popular sites, popular facilities. That's that's as much as we have at this point.
Thank you very much, indeed. I'm going now to members of the committee for questions. Are there any questions? Councillor Greggs first.
Thank you. I've got a couple of points. A question for you first, Mike. On page forty five, the household waste collected, it says includes all sources, not just curbside collections. Could you elaborate on to what all sources entails or includes?
It is it is municipal waste, so it is mainly, the vast majority of it is is at curbside household waste recycling centres and fly tipping. Certain amount of district collection streams if if they are charging for walking waste collections and things of that nature, but they are very minor in comparison to the the tonnage that we get through through the curbside collections. So and historically, the household waste sites have gone down a great deal in the last, well, the twelve month period. I think it was something like forty six thousand fewer tonnes coming through household waste recycling centres, which is a massive drop from what it should be when it was around seventy five thousand tonnes. But it's it's something which we don't know what what the public, what the real picture is yet until we get a period where we have a similar kind of approach and model to what we historically have. We don't really have an idea where where the material is going if extra material is being generated. But there is a great deal of information and complaints continually in the press about fly tipping. But that that doesn't necessarily mean that there is a massive increase in fly tipping. And I think it's it's public perception. And I think there is an increase in fly tipping, but not to the extent of what people might perceive. So it's in the hundreds of tonnes rather than the thousands of tonnes. But it's overall, it is basically curbside collection, collected household waste recycling centres and any other materials collected by the district councils.
Do you want to come back? Thank you very much. The reason I asked was for exactly that. You touched on fly tipping collected by local authorities. And whilst I appreciate that potentially the public perception is not quite as bad as the reality, I know from sitting on cabinet at district council, the reality is still pretty bad. As yeah, I'm sure everybody across the country's noticed massive increases in fly tipping. The reason I ask is because one thing I'd like to see in the report is historic data for comparisons. Because it's all well and good looking at today's particular snapshot, but if you can't compare it across a comparable time period, and I appreciate that obviously Covid's meant that a direct comparison is not possible anyway. But it's nice to be able to see trends because, and again, I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, our work programme or our ability to have a flexible work programme and add things to it so that we can, you know, help the executive and the council as a whole to manage their resources and allocate things better. So from my point of view, it'd be really useful to have a full picture of waste. Because if potentially we need to all look at increasing the budget free requirements of the waste department, that'd be really helpful for you and your guys if we had a full picture so that we can understand and digest it. Because executive have lots of decisions that they need to make with the scrutiny of different committees such as this one. And if we're not able to properly scrutinise, that makes it more difficult. My final two points are, are we currently advertising on websites when busy? I know we discussed at the last meeting, we were going to look at either doing that or highlighting when the key busy periods at HWRCs household waste recycling centres, rather, were busy. Because I'm sure we've all noticed there's big queues at most of the ones I've seen on social media. And also, I didn't raise it at the last meeting because it wasn't prevalent to the report on the last meeting. But obviously, prior to Covid, we were operating on a seven day policy of opening the waste recycling centres. Did that change due to a change in budget allocation for them? Did it change due to the fact that additional costs were present because of the management they had to do put in for Covid and did that impact on the potential opening hours? Because obviously, if it's only open five sevenths of the time, it's obviously going to be bigger, busier when it is open. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you. Just just respond to that. The in terms of the full picture of waste, I do accept that. And I think what we need to do better is inform the exec of of what the full picture is and put into more context as to what the different annual tonnages are for these different streams. So for example, fly tipping has gone up from eight hundred tonnes the previous year to twelve hundred tonnes during the Covid period. And that sounds like a lot, but in the bigger picture, it's it's not so much. Because people people use the argument, oh, you're not taking so much material through a household waste site. That's because it's ended up being flighted. And the the magnitude of that equation just doesn't stack up because we have accepted forty five thousand less tonnes through household waste recycling centres. But a an increase in in kind of five hundred tonnes, four hundred tonnes of flighting, which is never great. We accept it's not great. We do. We are looking at different initiatives for flighting. I think it just it puts into proper context what the magnitude of the different streams are. So that's that's something that I can work with colleagues to report better on. And I'll come back to the committee with a better picture because the information is there. It's it's in our annual reports and it is something that we could produce. We recently produced the update, the the waste plan and the programme, which which shows this information. So we could possibly bring that to the committee and and have a bit more discussion around what the full picture is. I think it's it's fair to say that it's not necessarily a financial issue with what's what's occurred. I think it's it's something that it's just the different trends that have changed and pulled the behaviour. And just coming back to your point regarding busy periods at our facilities. Busy periods historically have been Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings. But what we're finding at the moment, that Friday mornings are now the busiest periods. And Saturdays and Sundays, yes, they're still busy, but they're not as busy as Fridays. And that's when we're facing the real pressure. So it's something that we haven't put information out so far because we're still learning. As this has only happened from the first of September, any predicted information that we we could put out would be out of date and it wouldn't represent what is actually happening on the ground. And it's surprising us, just in the matter of two weeks, how different the picture is to what we historically used to experience, even with the same operating days. So that that is something that we're learning. And once we've got a better picture of what the situation is, we will report that on our websites as to when the best, when the busiest peaks are and when the best times could be to to visit sites. But at the moment, we're still gathering that that level of information. But in in terms of daily, the the changes in operating hours, we did we did tweak some sites to increase and some some sites to slightly decrease the number of days to give us a consistent approach across the county. Now we operate on a five day basis across the county, whereas previously we we had a seven day and a four day opening at different sites. We tried to be to to bring this in line and make it consistent across the board. And one of the challenges that we've faced and one of the things that the the feedback that we've been getting from the site contract managers is that to go from a five day opening to a seven day opening would be represent a considerable cost burden. Because it's you might think, well, that's that's only going up by two extra days on a site. However, we could end up potentially having to employ twice as many staff to meet the requirements, employee employment requirements of how long hours people can actually work. So it's it's not just a case of increasing the staff rate by two fifths. It's it's increasing the whole of the site staff across the board. So it it would have a financial consequence. And it's something that we continually review. And I think it's fair to say that we don't want to say, we don't want to make too many changes at this point in time because of the new booking system or the booking system being canned and and just kind of deleted. We've gone to this this historical model. I think what we need to do is gather the information and data about how much material we're receiving through the site and talk to the contractors. It's all well and good. Us having a desire, an aspiration to be open seven days a week at certain sites, if the budget is not there, that's that's one issue. But also if if those site contractors can't get the staff, then that's going to be another issue in itself. And I think in in waste management, there is a real pressure, as there is across a lot of sectors, for employable staff and trained staff who can carry out these types of functions. So it is it's a challenge, but I think at the moment, our position is that we want to establish as as much information as we can, just gather and monitor the data and then make some informed decisions. Maybe not for the winter because historically things will calm down. Once we once we get to opening hours in the winter and less green material is presented, the seasonality comes into play. So we're unlikely to make any changes over the winter and keep us on the similar pattern that we have been. But then over the winter, if we come into the spring, it's something that we could consider regarding extending hours or days at particular sites. So I hope that's answered your question.
Yes, thank you very much, Mike. That was a great explanation.
Thank you very much, Steve. Mike, I've got one more question and then I'm going to move on to the next agenda item. Councillor Fleetwood? Councillor Linda Woodton?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your report. I wonder if you can answer a question that always is in my mind when we talk about waste. How much of the black bin collection residual waste actually goes to the waste centre to be used as power? And the other question is, what happens to the waste that is collected at the sites? Where does it go from there and what's it used for? Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. If you could keep your reply short, please. Thank you.
Yeah, the the amount of material which goes from the household waste sites for incineration is is round about twenty to twenty five percent. So it's essentially, that's the gap between the recycling rate and the the one hundred percent. So that will be what 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 isn't recycled. So that would go direct, if we can, from whichever facility or it goes to our waste transfer station sites. But anything else which is collected at curbside in the black black bin does go for incineration at the energy from waste plant. And at the moment, that is around a hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty five thousand tonnes per year. So that that is energy recovery. It's historically went to landfill, which was obviously very bad for the environment and would have been a massive financial consequence hadn't we built the FW. I think it's it's fair to say that we are we're always looking at ways of of reducing how much black bin material is collected. And obviously, that's something which is, we have to work better and closer with the public to do that. However, it is inevitable that certain materials will have to go for that type of incineration. But one thing that we are looking at in the future is is separate collection of food waste, which will help with recycling rates because food waste is a very big contaminant for the materials which have recycling possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Members, the actions today are this committee is invited to consider and comment on the details of the performance contained within the report and recommend any changes or actions to the relevant executive councillor. The proposal is, I move that we receive the report and are satisfied with the performance for quarter one. Can I ask if you all agree with this? Do I propose it? Councillor Brockway, seconded by councillor Linda Woodton. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. We'll move on to the next item, which is Draft Lincolnshire Employment and Skills Strategy twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three. This item is on pages forty seven to sixty of the agenda pack and considers the work undertaken to date to develop the Draft Lincolnshire Employment and Skills Strategy and Work Plan for twenty one, twenty three. This report will be presented by Justin. Justin, over to you.
Chairman, thank you. And I'm conscious that time is against us, so I'm only really going to speak to page forty nine. And I guess we we all recognise, don't we, that that skills and employment are absolutely critical to the future of the county and to the future of individuals in the county. And and if I were to say, what are the issues affecting skills and employment in Lincolnshire? I'd say really that there are four. The first one is that we have a significant number of hard to fill vacancies. That could be anything from healthcare professionals, social care professionals, people working in the food sector, HGV drivers, chefs, et cetera. The second challenge that we have is that jobs are changing. We know that the jobs of today have more technical and managerial expectations than the jobs of five years ago, and they will continue to change. The third issue is about Lincolnshire itself. It's a large rural county. And that means that expecting lots of people to go to college is only part of a picture and we require a far more blended approach to delivery. And then the fourth issue to address is that we have a lot of small and medium sized businesses and very few large businesses. So those are the challenges that we are trying to tackle in terms of employment and skills. I'd like to just mention one piece of context, which is that the government spends round about forty million pounds a year on skills in Lincolnshire. I've got about two hundred and fifty thousand pounds a year. So the job that we're trying to look at in terms of the employment and skills strategy is to add is to add value, if you like, to be the icing on the cake. We've looked at a number of issues and solutions that we could develop, whether those are around things like tackling some people's access to digital learning where they're having difficulties, whether it's about looking at different ways of providing transports to help people get to placements and training, whether it's about job matching schemes to connect up people who are looking for a job with jobs in the workforce. We've discounted each of those for a number of reasons, primarily because others are doing the work. And we believe that what we should do is try and support others rather than get in their way or even conflict with them. So therefore, on page forty-nine, we've got the four items that we propose should be the priorities that we, as a council, working alongside our counterparts in the LEP, should address. So number one is a piece of work to collaborate very strongly with the further education colleges to develop what you might call a pipeline of project ideas for their investment in the future, for them to invest in the training facilities that they require. Number two is a programme to work with our two universities on a graduate retention plan. And something I should stress is that Lincolnshire is actually no different to anywhere else in the country in terms of the number of graduates who leave and do not come back. It's a rural urban issue. It is not a problem that is exclusive to Lincolnshire. The third issue that we're looking to tackle is around trying to increase the number of apprenticeships. And we hope to do that through a really big drive in February when it is National Apprenticeship Week, working with individuals and employers to tell them about apprenticeships. And then finally, we have managed to attract a grant to enable us to have what we're calling an expanded enterprise advisor network, a network of businesses who will go into secondary schools, every secondary school and every special needs school in Lincolnshire, and help the careers teacher to be able to put on information and courses which help young people know about the world of work in Lincolnshire. So those are the four priorities that I would recommend to you. They clearly drive across from the issues I described at the start of the report. And I'll leave it there, chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve. Before I open up, two questions from the members of the committee. I have a question. On long-term unemployment rates, do you believe that many of the universities or colleges in Lincolnshire are producing good quality candidates, but they're leaving the county to go elsewhere rather than stay in this county?
So most rural areas find that people who leave university either remain in the city that they study in or go and work in cities and larger urban areas. And then generally speaking, as people get into their late thirties, they think a bit more about returning to where they're from or moving to a place which is perhaps a bit more rural. And so we will be looking to book the trend, but we think if we can increase the number of graduates who study in Lincolnshire, whether they're Lincolnshire folk who are just travelling daily to the universities or whether they're people who have come from other cities, then that gives us an energy and it gives us a new group of people bringing skills and knowledge to the area.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm now going to open the members of the committee. Anyone wish to answer a question? councillor Kev Clark.
Thank you, chairman. On receiving the report, I thought what a joy it was when I got to page forty-nine and it says point three, more apprenticeships. For the last twelve years, I've been raising this within the council about having more apprentices. Recently, we hear about a shortage of HGV drivers. When the shortage of any skill sector comes to the news, that's when we hear about it. There's no ever forward planning. There's not been a case when all of a sudden all the HGV drivers have just left. There's been no forward planning. So I welcome the report. What I would say is, I think Lincolnshire County Council could play a bit more of a bigger role where not taking the apprentices on directly, but through contracts that we award, have it written in that contract that you must take a certain number of apprentices on throughout the life of that contract. Thank you, chairman.
Yeah, thank you councillor Clark. Yeah, I think it's very important to have apprentice schemes. And the more we can attract, the better it is. Justin, do you want to answer those questions?
So I agree with everything councillor Clark has said. Professionally, the first job I had was in a Lincolnshire-based part of the civil service, which commissioned training according to local needs. I wish we still had those services in place because the contracting is done at a central level and often based on cost. And the more that we as a county council can do to influence those organisations, the better. So that's something that we are looking at. There are some very good examples of where we have introduced apprentices as a condition of contracts. It could go further and that's something that I'd be very keen to pick up and to explore further, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Matt Bowles.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I welcome this report and completely support it. I've just got some queries on, I've lost my page now. Point four of the plans, which relates to careers provision, for want of a better term. Having worked in secondary academy previously for fifteen years, I've sort of seen the cycle of careers being prominent, to it being non-existent, to it being somewhere in the middle, to it being patchy. And it always depends on funding and who's in charge of the academy and where they see it as a priority. So I suppose my question is, how do we ensure that that equality of provision is provided across county, regardless of who the sponsor of academy chains are and things like that? You know, just speaking from Gainsborough, you know, my experience, we had a situation where the secondary school was, you know, had a poor reputation, was getting a lot of things wrong, had shut down careers, wasn't engaging with local employers, the local skills needs. It took some real hard work from the local district authority to get in there and start putting some things in place. You know, we do have a situation now where they do hold regular careers furs, which are, you know, good and delivering what we hope they deliver in the future. So it's about how we get to those difficult places where we might not be welcome to be doing this and ensuring that all the children across county are getting a similar level of service and, you know, supporting their potential. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I'm kicking myself. I'd forgotten your background. I think it's a really, really important point. So I'm actually one of the enterprise advisors, so I go into a particular secondary school. And I think it's fair to say I'm a bit frustrated by it because the careers teacher is a maths teacher who has one hour a week to work on careers. So the job that I see myself have in is trying to get to the head teacher and to the senior leadership team to say, that needs to be more. She wants to do this, but it's very hard to engage on one hour a week. Councillor Bradwell is very, very keen to ensure that we really drive this message home through the regular meetings with the head teachers of all of the secondary schools across Lincolnshire. We have an agenda item at their meeting on the fifth of October. However, I guess maybe a request to the councillors on this committee and beyond. A number of you will be on the managing boards of schools. And if you are, if there is anything you can do to help to get this careers message across, that would be extremely helpful and we'd happily provide material to help you to do so.
Thank you. councillor Jackie Brockway.
Oh, thank you, chairman. I'm interested in some figures on page fifty-four, the second paragraph about local qualification and skills levels. Now, I notice that the gap nationally and Lincolnshire-wise is increasing when it comes to level four qualifications. So level four is certificate of education and or first year university, that sort of level. And I'd be interested to know why that might be. Now, the figures show that to get us up to national level, we need another fifty-eight thousand people with those qualifications now, essentially. But is that, are we able to find out or is the knowledge available already about whether this is because fewer of our young people are going into tertiary education? Or is it because more older people are moving into or living in the county? Because it isn't necessarily because the young are not going on. So I'd be curious to know why that increase in the gap has occurred. Because, you know, they do get supported and encouraged to go on. So it's a curious figure. Thanks ever so much.
Yeah, we are about to commission a piece of work with one of the colleges in the county to really monitor how things change over the next two years because there's a real human element to this. And we need to understand that because policies can be policies, but people are people and there are two different things. What we do know though, which I think is important to recognise, is that we've increased significantly the number of people with no qualifications. And that's been a very clear policy decision. So over the course of a decade, that figure has gone down substantially. If we can do the same thing and see if we can drive up the number at level four, we won't see an immediate improvement, but hopefully we will see an improvement and that will be valuable to the economy. The one big challenge I see in all of it is at the moment, policy is that people who are undertaking level three or level four have to pay for it themselves. They have to pay for the qualification themselves. And of course, if Lincolnshire is an area with lower than average salary levels, then there is less money to pay for qualifications. So that becomes a significant challenge. And if you add in the challenge of travelling, then that also becomes a barrier. So there's a very complex mix to this. There are a number of human aspects, there are a number of financial aspects, and there is something about the time and barriers to training as well. Hopefully, the piece of work we're about to commission will help us to solve that.
Yes, please do.
So I'm just a bit worried about this. I mean, level three includes A-levels, doesn't it? Are they not, are they being charged if they go to college for those A-levels as opposed to staying in school? Or is this too detailed a question for now, perhaps?
It's levels three and four that are paid for for adults, not people who are of a younger age. And I'm pleased about that, given that my daughter started at Grantham College last week.
Councillor Griggs wants to answer your question, councillor Brockway.
Yeah, so this is something I deal with on a minute, daily basis, because it's the start of the academic year. So the way it works is anyone enrolling on a course that's aged over nineteen years at the start of September has to take out an adult learning loan, which is very similar to student loans. The problem, one of the problems I've noticed we've got is that many colleges have started enrolling people onto one-year, level three courses instead of two. So for instance, if you look at BTEC National Diplomas, they'll enroll you on a one-year course each year because then that way, if you fall into the nineteen category for your second year, you're kind of forced to take the loan out to complete your qualification. And I personally noticed that is a barrier to entry. I have many learners that stopped education this year because they went, I refuse to get into any form of debt. And I can speak from experience, owing approximately eighty thousand pounds in student loans as we stand at present, that goes up by about six percent a year. My last, oh, my other points that I'll be super quick on because I am aware of the time. I really like what councillor Clark said. I think that was a fantastic idea. And I do think for anyone who's in education, we may notice that changes to things such as T-levels might be extremely good. Generally, I'm sure we'd all agree when the government interferes in education, it doesn't usually have the desired outcome. But I personally think that it's a fantastic thing. For anyone who doesn't know what that is, it's replacing BTECs to technical levels and making them engage far more with employers and focus more on engaging with employers. And I think especially for a rural area such as ours, that's fantastic. Because, I'll include myself in this, many young people don't know what's out there. And again, I think that links in with the work doing with schools. Because I know Haven High, for instance, in Boston, when Matt Van Leeuwen took over as headmaster, one of the big things he focused on was raising aspirations. Because normal kids from rural communities who, you know, grew up with factory landworker parents, such as myself, don't know what's out there, don't know what opportunities there are locally. And if you look in Lincolnshire, we have some fantastic tech companies and all sorts of other companies that people just don't know about. So hopefully with the introduction of T-levels, changing how work experience works, instead of sending kids to, you know, boots for a week, because whilst it's great to get them some experience, surely it's better to send them for a longer period of time so they're not just doing basic jobs and they can understand what opportunities are available for the future. Another interesting point was raised about future planning. I believe that was councillor Clark also. And we often find that that's the position when we have a mass number of workers. And unfortunately, due to Brexit, Covid and everything else, we now find that many organisations are going, future planning is going to be a problem for me. So again, hopefully that will drive a big push in apprenticeships. And I think that's all my points summarised quickly.
Great. Thank you very much indeed for a real good explanation there. I'm going to go to the actions now.
Sorry, could I just ask a, sorry, could I just come in?
I do apologise, because we wanted to see you, yes.
No worries.
Could you make a quick question?
Very quickly, yes. Anyone casually reading points one to four might unfortunately imply this only applied to the under-twenty-fives. And obviously, the relationship between business requirements for labour and skills that the labour market has applies across the border from eighteen to sixty-six, state retirement age, or sixty-seven. And so I wonder, you know, how is this strategy going to help those who are over twenty-five and need to retrain?
Yeah, good point. Thank you. I think in terms of over twenty-five apprenticeships is an option. Part of what we're looking at in terms of point number one is about ensuring that there is provision for retraining and for people entering the world of work after a period of caring, typically mums with small children. So I think things will pick up there. I will take that challenge back, that we need to look at the age profile. And if I may, chairman, if I can also possibly from time to time use councillor Bowles and councillor Griggs' knowledge of the system just to help. And councillor Spratt, of course, who I had known worked in a college and he's not caught me out. But maybe if I could ask the three of you to just be available to give a bit of advice from time to time, that would be really helpful.
That's most welcome. Thank you very much indeed. Right, sorry about that. We're going to go now to the actions. The committee is invited to consider and determine whether it provides a local cohesive, evidence-led response to Lincolnshire's challenge and future opportunities and recommend any changes or actions to the relevant executive councillor and the chief executive of the council. I propose that we endorse the report and request our comments as recorded be tagged into account to our second. Councillor Griggs, all those in favour? That is unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. We now move on to the next item of the agenda, bearing in mind we've only got forty-five minutes to go. This one is the England Coast Path progress. This item is on page sixty-one to sixty-eight of the agenda pack and considers the progress of the establishment and future management of the England Coast Path in Lincolnshire. This report will be presented by Chris Miller, team leader of Countryside Services. Chris, very welcome to you and over to you.
Thank you, chairman. Good afternoon, councillors. I will try and keep this as brief as I possibly can. And I do think the report actually speaks for itself in the main anyway. So hopefully the information you require is self-contained within it. But just going through it very briefly, the England Coast Path will be a national trail once it's completed around the whole of the England coastline. Wales are undertaking their own version of it and are pretty much completed it, I believe, already. And as a consequence, Lincolnshire are obviously engaged in that, having quite a substantial coastline of our own. The actual premise of it is an extension of the open access land, which is what many people would call right to roam, which was based on mountain moorland, downland and heath, of which Lincolnshire is unsurprisingly not very well represented. We don't have very many areas of right to roam. However, the implementation of the Marine and Coastal Access Act in two thousand and nine extended those categories to include the coastline. extended those categories to include the coastline, which obviously will affect us a great deal more. Within that coastal margin of land, the expectation is that a trail will be established all the way along it to create this national trail and become known as the England Coast Path. That's now coming towards its conclusion. Nick Clegg had announced many moons ago that it would be completed by two thousand and twenty-one. And clearly, events have overtaken us somewhat nationally and in a worldwide context. So, it's been a little bit behind. But at the last meeting I went to of the National Board, there were only two stretches left, the Isle of Wight, where there's a National Trust property affected, which is causing some consternation, and a section, I believe, somewhere on the south coast, I can't remember exactly where, where there's a significant MOD impact. Obviously, two very major issues that need a bit of sorting out first. But other than that, all the other stretches are pretty much on the go. In terms of the Lincolnshire context, we actually have four stretches. The first one of which is very, very short, the Hunstanton to Suttonbridge section. So, crossing over the Norfolk border to Suttonbridge, it's not very far, and runs on what is already a public bridleway. So, our management of it is already there as part of our highways remit in any case. Beyond that, Suttonbridge to Skegness, working from south to north. Obviously, quite a long stretch. It has our longest stretch of continuous non-access at the current time. Quite a lot of our coastline already has reasonable levels of access in some form or another. But this section, particularly between Boston and Gibraltar Point, there is very little in the way of public access. And it is likely that the, well, we know, because the report has been published, because it's in the determined phase now, that it will run along the sea banks as best as possible, around the Wash, all the way from Suttonbridge into Boston, back out again, all the way up to Gibraltar Point. The major piece of infrastructure involved in that process will be the construction of a bridge at Gibraltar Point, or the taking over of an existing internal drainage board bridge. But it needs quite a bit of improvement first. The next stretch is a stretch that's actually open. It's been open since two thousand and nineteen, in February two thousand and nineteen. We opened the Skegness to Mabelthorpe stretch, predominantly on promenades. So, it was obviously an easy win for Natural England when they were going through it. With a major piece of infrastructure being the extension of the promenade between Chapel St Leonard's and the North Sea Observatory as an attraction in its own right, which now provides a continuous link for those with less mobility along that stretch of the coastline, all the way from Chapel St Leonard's back into Skegness, which has been very well used and is very well regarded. Our biggest issue on this stretch is wind-blown sand and the risings on the promenade, which is a constant battle. Good as I am, I can't control the wind, as David was alluding to, the weather earlier as well. It is something that we can only really fight retrospectively. We do get a lot of criticism for people turning up wanting to use the path and saying we couldn't use it in our mobility scooters or whatever, because there was too much sand. But we can only do what we can do. The final section for the authority is Mabelthorpe up to the Humberston Fitties. But the actual stretch, actually, from Natural England's perspective, goes all the way up to the Humber Bridge. And that's another section in its determination phase at present. So, the reports out there about the line that Natural England have selected for the path and the margin associated with it, and it's currently under consultation. Well, at last count, there was only one representation for the whole of that stretch, which was to do with a small gate. So, hopefully, it will be dealt with fairly swiftly, and we can move on to some establishment works there. The interesting part about that route is that there is a seasonal alternative stretch around Dona Nook to take into account the seal breeding seasons. There was a lot of representation from the natural environment bodies regarding this stretch, not least Dona Nook, but also the very important Humber Bank stretches in terms of ecology impacts, which has meant that that was one of the last sections in the country to actually get published. Once all that process has been through and it's been reviewed in terms of the representations made for the Suttonbridge to Skegness and Mabelthorpe to Humber Bridge stretches, we will move into an establishment phase where we will be funded to provide the infrastructure. So, signage, any changes to, from styles to gates to improve access, and basic improvements to the route that we can make to it, including the bridge I mentioned earlier at Gibraltar Point. Once that work is completed, they will move to the open phase, whereafter we are expected, as the local authority, to form a partnership to manage the whole stretch from Suttonbridge to the Humber Bridge with our colleagues in the unitary authorities of North and North East Lincolnshire. And that's a process I'm currently undertaking with my colleagues in those authorities, working with Natural England to see how that will look and how it will develop. There will be other parties to that partnership going forward, National Trust, Environment Agency, the district councils that are affected as well, business and tourism interest groups and so on. Because the expectation isn't, you just manage the trail like we do the normal rights-of-way network, we're certain protect. But that we should also follow some national trail quality standards of experience, enhancement, engagement and economy, in that these are all the things that the trail should bring to the authority's area, to bring it some boost to those particular factors, particularly the economy bits, where we can perhaps link certain trade, business, tourism and so on to the usage of the path. That is actually, that does come to a cost at the authority, to be able to do that at a ratio of one pound to three pound. So, we put in twenty-five per cent and Natural England will put in seventy-five per cent, up to a maximum level based on a funding formula, which is quite complex, but it's mainly based on length. So, as an authority basis, we actually do quite well, because we've got quite a lengthy coastline. So, we get a fair amount of the national trail pot in that regard. And that will help, you know, in terms of those four quality standards that we have to adhere to, to secure those fundings. And that, in hopefully a rough nutshell, is the report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Chris. I recall actually going to the opening of the footpath between Skegness to Mabelthorpe and seeing the North Sea Observatory, very impressive building, and certainly worthwhile members visiting that area if they can. I'm now going to open up to members of the committee to comment. councillor Carrington.
Thank you very much, chairman. And thanks to our officers, I think that report, if nothing else, illustrates just how tremendously complicated it is to actually create a footpath. It sounds like something should be very easy and very simple, actually legally, as well as physically. It's something which is very, very complicated. And I think our officers and their colleagues should be thanked for the work which has been done. It's particularly pleasing to see in the report that there are five stages in bringing each section into being fully. And we're either stage four, or in one case, stage five, in all cases. Mr Miller referred to the importance of countryside access. And that is a vital thing, it's a legal right, it's extremely important in and of itself. But I think there are two other benefits, which I would just draw to members' attention. One is wellbeing and health, which clearly this council has a responsibility for. Wellbeing is also something which our district colleagues share responsibility for. It is enormously important to provide a joined-up network, a footpath that will get people out and get people used to enjoying our countryside. And I hope that that's something that this council can concentrate on in the next four years. But there's also a benefit to the economy. We heard at the beginning of this meeting from portfolio holder councillor Davy. And in his report, he included mention of the way that tourism had in many cases held up very well during the pandemic and was bouncing back very positively. We already have one strategic path, the Viking Way going through our area. We have a national Suss Trans route going through our area. This will also contribute very greatly to bringing people into Lincolnshire to our economic benefit and to improve the tourism offer which we can provide. So, I think this sums up absolutely great work. I very much look forward to being able to walk all sections of it. Perhaps we could organise a committee trip when that is available, and we all walk parts of it together. Thank you, chairman.
councillor Carrington, that's a very good idea. In fact, we are looking at doing committee meetings outside of this building, so it's a good recommendation for you. Any further speakers? No? Well, I'll move to the actions then. This committee is invited to consider and comment on the details of this report. Approve the continuation of engagement by officers with Natural England colleagues to ensure that the England Coast Path and coastal margin is properly established and to continue to discuss the partnership arrangements for managing the trail and margin with the appropriate bodies. I move that we note the progress highlighted in the report and request our comments are recorded and taken into account. Do I have a second here? Who's first? Ian? All those in favour, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That is carried, and thank you very much indeed, Chris. Look forward to seeing your report next time. Move on to the last substantive item, which is the Green Master Plan. This item is on page sixty-nine to seventy-four of the Agenda Pack and considers a progress update on the Green Master Plan, outlines the initial progress towards the council's target to reach net zero carbon by two thousand and fifty. This report will be presented by Dan Clayton, Sustainability Manager, Environment, who is attended by teams. Dan, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon, good afternoon, chair, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, when the Green Master Plan was approved back in March, it came through this committee first in January and February, and then was approved by full council in March. We kind of gave a commitment to give regular updates on the progress. So, this is the first of those update reports. And I've kind of gone through and listed the things that we've been doing. So, we put a detailed action plan in place. So, the Green Master Plan itself, it had the target for the council and the wider economy of Lincolnshire to reach net zero by two thousand and fifty. And we've started to put together an action plan of how that can be achieved. And we've had some initial projects that have got underway. So, things like our climate change adaptation work, we've been working on training for staff, and we've developed a series of engagement activities, including the climate summit that was mentioned at the start of this meeting, that is going to be held at the showground on the thirteenth of October. So, we've been putting together a range of projects. And the council's made excellent progress in reducing its own carbon emissions. So, compared to the nineteen ninety baseline, we're over sixty per cent down. And we obviously reduced our own emissions last year because of the lockdown. And there was a significant reduction in energy usage across the council's buildings due to people working from home. But prior to that, we'd already made significant progress of over fifty-five per cent reduction in emissions. And that was due to rationalising the size of the council's estate, putting investment into energy efficiency projects, and then the wider national programme to reduce the carbon intensity of the electricity grid. So, all those things have come together to reduce our emissions. And as an organisation, we're ahead of the national picture. So, nationally, about forty-five per cent of emissions are down since nineteen ninety, and we're ahead of that at fifty-five per cent. And I think after the pandemic year, it will be well over sixty per cent. So, we put those things into place. We've also then tried to look at the wider carbon emissions from the economy in Lincolnshire. So, we commissioned a report from some consultants called Bioregional to do a baseline assessment of carbon across the whole economy. And this has identified that forty per cent of the county's emissions come from the surface transport sector. Around about thirty per cent come from business and industry. And the final thirty per cent come from domestic usage. So, we're now looking at options of how we can decarbonise those areas. And, you know, a lot of it is reliant on national policy, you know, things like the, you know, the switch to lower emission vehicles and the work the government have been doing on the work to kind of decarbonise heating of people's homes. So, all those things are coming together. We've got a kind of a baseline that we can measure against for the progress in the coming years. The paper also then talks about the climate partnership that we've been looking at, because we recognise that business and industry were a significant contributor to emissions within the county, and how we could help particularly small and medium-sized businesses to reduce their emissions. So, we're looking at this idea of a climate partnership. Hopefully, as Justin said earlier, with the community renewal funding, we've got some projects within the bid that went into that that will help with the establishment of the partnership, including some, potentially some grants for businesses to install environmental technology within their businesses. So, things like LED lighting, solar panels, electronic heating systems, all those kind of things. So, if and when the community renewal funding comes through, then we'll push forward with that. We've also got some training programmes in there to look at issues around environmental legislation that's coming through. So, hopefully, we will be able to deliver those if and when we get the community renewal funding. And then the final section of the report covers the tree strategy work that we've been doing. So, there was the council's objective to plant a tree for every resident in the county. And initially, we didn't have many suitable sites in the county's own land holdings. There's obviously the farm estate, but most of that is grade-one agricultural land. And we didn't think that was suitable for tree planting. So, we've gone out to every district, every parish and every town council within the county to see if they have any suitable land for tree planting. And we've had about sixty parish councils come forward, identifying land that they own where they would like to plant trees. There've also been some private landowners that have come forward. And then we've identified some highways land to replace trees that have been lost by ash dieback disease. And news hot off the press is that we've, yesterday, had confirmation that we've received a hundred and seventy thousand pounds from the Forestry Commission through their Treescape grant to plant trees around the county in non-woodland settings. So, all of those parishes that have identified sites will now be able to deliver tree planting programmes for them. And the chair asked me to raise the issue of the Grantham Barracks and the potential development there, which will lead to lots of trees. And we've identified about five or six sites around that area where parishes have come forward with proposals and private landowners. So, we've got two schemes in Londonthorpe, one from Ropesley Parish Council. There's a private landowner in Grantham that is sort of within a couple of hundred yards of the Grantham Barrack site, who wants to plant trees on their land. And then there are three or four areas of district council land within Grantham that have been identified as suitable for tree planting. So, we're looking at opportunities of adding the trees there and potentially moving some of the trees from the Barrack site as well, which were only fairly recently planted. So, yeah, this funding will allow us to start to deliver the tree planting programme. And then, in the future, we plan to bring a tree strategy for the whole county. And in fact, it'll probably be a Greater Lincolnshire strategy to a future meeting of this committee going forward. So, that's an overview of the report.
Thank you, Dan. It's good news to hear about Grantham and the Princeville and Grosso Barrack site. I'm now going to open up to members of the committee to comment or ask questions. councillor Clark.
Thank you, chairman. It's been widely reported the government have actually fallen behind on the climate change programme. I would ask the authority to press hard with this plan and don't allow it to fall behind. And the question is, I might have missed it, what sort of trees are there? I know the wooden, but apart from that.
Well, yeah, we're picking the right tree for the right place. So, some places have asked for hedging plants, others have asked for specific species. And then in other places, it will be down to the council's own tree officers to decide on the species. So, you know, in some places, it won't be appropriate to plant something that's going to end up growing sort of thirty metres high. So, we'll pick something that will grow to a suitable level. But they're all going to be native species. And, yeah, we, as part of the funding, we get an ongoing payment from the Forestry Commission for maintenance for the first four years as well.
Does that answer your question, councillor Clark? Good, the next question is from Tom, councillor Ashton.
Thank you very much. I've two areas of inquiry. The first is the electric vehicle support, which I find, which is really, really interesting. But obviously, a concern there is whether there is But obviously a concern there is whether there is enough electricity available in the local grid in order to meet that anticipated demand. I appreciate that council car parks across Lincolnshire have seen charging points installed, rapid charging points installed. Usually the limiting factor on the number that have been installed isn't a will or ambition on behalf of the car park owner, it's that the grid will not sustain, will not supply perhaps more than two or three at any one location. I wonder what plans there are maybe to address that. And the second area that I'd like to raise is around trees and hedges. I'm delighted actually that we are adopting a view of the right tree in the right place because certainly in respect of highways and in the fens, in the area that I represent, if you have a tree next to a Fennel Road, the chances are you'll have a ginormous dip in that road where it has sucked out all of the moisture over the last 50 years. However, is there any chance that we could look at this with as much emphasis on hedge and hedge rows as of what we are in terms of tree? Because in terms of straightforward trees, because quite often, if you can't put a tree in the right place, you could very realistically put a hedge row. And I'm thinking in terms of the council's farm, the council's own estate. I don't see any reason why every field could not have a hedge on at least one side of every drainage ditch. It would still allow you to maintain the drainage ditch from one side. It would allow with modern hedging equipment, farm machinery to maintain both the hedge and the drainage ditch without either getting in the way of the other. And while you're at planting hedge rows, there's no harm in occasionally putting trees if there are places to do so along it. I mean, I'm very passionate about anything that we can do to enhance our landscape in this way. And if we could look at it in terms of not just a tree policy, but a tree and hedge policy, I'm pretty certain sure we will find a lot more locations where we can put a nice hedge, even if we can't get a tree there.
Thank you, Councillor Ashton. You make some very good points there. Dan, do you want to respond, please?
Yeah, so on the electric vehicles, there is a draft electric vehicle strategy which the council has commissioned from, I think, I believe it's WSP. And that is going to be part of the consultation with the Local Transport Plan Five that I think is due out in October. So that will be a key part of that. And on the grid capacity, I think it's Justin's team have commissioned a report on local area energy planning to precisely look at those issues that you raised around, you know, there being available capacity for potentially electric heating and electric vehicles. So that is definitely something that we are kind of getting two reports to cover in the coming months. And then on the hedge row, yeah, definitely, I agree with that. And I think when we approach landowners, I would estimate that at least 30% of the landowners that have contacted us about planting trees are looking for hedge row planting rather than pure tree planting. And some of them are planning to do a mixture where they'll, you know, plant a row of hawthorn and then put, you know, trees in a designated distance within there. So, yeah, so I think, yeah, it will include hedge rows within the scheme going forward.
Please come back.
Thank you. And just one final thought that occurred to me on hedge rows. In terms of promoting and encouraging farmers to look at going down this route, it might be worth working with the Police and Crime Commissioner on the hare coursing stuff as it's certainly been something that's always sprung to my mind, that if farmers want to do something proactive in terms of discouraging hare coursers to come from Lincolnshire, then actually planting hedges gives the hare a substantial advantage over the dog. And I have raised that informally with the Police and Crime Commissioner. I just think it's something that we could maybe join up and work together on.
Dan, before you answer that, I'm the representative on the Lincolnshire Police and Crime Panel for this authority. So if you'd like to put that in writing to me, I'll make sure that he gets you an answer. Dan, over to you.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable idea. And actually, one of the sites that I didn't mention that we are planning to do some large scale planting is on land next to the police headquarters at Nettleham. It's the site owned by the police. So we'll be kind of closely involved with them. So there'll be opportunities to discuss that idea with the team there as we develop those planting plans, I think.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. My next question is from councillor Jackie Brockway.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Two things really. On the point of the trees, I've been reading recently about some communities that are starting to plant fruit trees at appropriate points so that residents can actually pick the fruit. And I know obviously there are cons to this because if they don't use the fruit, then you've got the mess of rotting fruit on the floor. But if locations and species are chosen effectively, it could be a great contributor to the community larder. And other food bushes are being considered in a number of communities as well. So I just wanted to raise that as a possibility. The thing that really worries me though is this business of the electric cars because electric cars use lithium batteries. And more and more, I'm seeing very, very negative press about the lithium batteries, about children being used to mine the lithium, about the massive amount of water that is used to produce these batteries and is possibly creating drought in communities that can't fend for themselves. So I think, you know, us sort of saying, talking about charging points and things like that is fine, but I am very, very cautious about supporting a policy which is going for electric cars until we've got clear evidence that the background work and the background processes needed to produce these batteries is ethical and isn't causing catastrophic damages or damage to communities that really can't fend for themselves. So I really do need to raise that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockway. Dan, any comment on that at all?
Yeah, so on the fruit trees, there are a couple of parishes that have come forward and asked for community orchards. And when we did the application, it was noted that I think over the period since the Second World War, Lincolnshire's lost about 60% of its traditional fruit orchards that it had in place. So I think any opportunity to kind of recreate that habitat is to be welcomed. So we'll be looking to do that. And there is a scheme with a food bank that looks to plant fruit trees at schools around the county who have got involved with the project as well. So they've identified a couple of school sites that were interested in fruit tree planting. So we'll definitely be doing that. And I think on the lithium question, I think that is a genuine concern that, you know, that needs to be brought into the debate around electric vehicles. I know that there are sort of various different battery chemistries that are being looked at that maybe reduce the requirement for lithium going forward and look at maybe using more other types of metals to store the energy. So there's an iron air battery which is being looked at for large scale storage actions that will reduce significantly the amount of lithium required. So, yeah, so I think it's a case of following up on the whole life costing reports for lithium as they come forward and looking for opportunities to look at other battery chemistries and potentially other fuels as well with the government produced, published the hydrogen strategy a couple of weeks ago and there is potential for vehicle transport around hydrogen as well. So, yes.
Thank you very much. Jackie, are you happy with that? Any, okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
I've got one more, one more councillor question. Are there any, anyone else that wants to ask questions? Councillor Cleaver and, Councillor Cleaver.
Thank you. I remember when I read the Green Master Plan for the first time, I was quite impressed by the ambition to reduce carbon by reducing the amount of vehicle use on the school run and encourage people it's quite safe for people to walk and cycle to school. Is there any progress on that that you could report to us?
Yeah, so there's the school travel scheme that's been going on. So we've got a series of kind of six pilot projects that are about to start, some of them around Lincoln, we're also looking at schools in Boston. And it's areas where if you make kind of small improvements to pathways and next to roads and things like that, it allows children to walk to school rather than be taxied or brought by their parents in cars. So we're looking at a range of those projects. I think there are six that have been funded through the government's Active Travel Capability Fund. So they're going to be starting sort of in the next few months in partnership with Suss Trans. So I think once we've got that model, we can look at rolling it out to schools right around the county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. And the last question, councillor Grikes.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brockway mentioned one point I had, sort of, about lithium batteries, but there's also the issue of how we recycle them. And I've seen in the press quite a lot of negative press about what it takes to, you know, get rid of them and how long they sit there and rot for essentially. Coming back to the trees, could you give me some more information on the grants available? Because I know in Boston, councillor Danny's dealing with Boston Woods Trust wanted to plant several thousand trees and were told, sorry, you can't have a very minor amount in comparison to put a footpath in, which at the minute is holding up the process and I'm sure that it will be resolved. But I don't know, you know, can we do anything so that if other landowners in a similar position are willing to foot the maintenance costs or the planting costs and, you know, what I would deem the expensive costs of the schemes, that if there's small things getting in the way, are we able to support that in place of the big money we'd normally give?
Yeah, so on the tree planting, there are two main bodies that are funding it. So the Forestry Commission have got a couple of schemes, which is the Treescapes Fund and they've also got the Urban Tree Challenge Fund. Now, most, I think in fact, all of the money in that is exclusively for the trees and the cost of their planting. So it doesn't allow for expenditure on any kind of works like for footpaths and things like that. And similarly for the other funders are the Woodland Trust. So they've got the England Woodland Creation Offer, which can pay 100% of the cost of the tree planting for large scale woodland development for landowners. So that's in place. And then the north of the county from, sort of in a diagonal line north from Saxellby to Louth is actually part of the northern forest area and there are a whole range of grants that are available for that. But I agree that it does make sense that if you're making a new large area of woodland, then access and footpath through it and to the site are certainly part of the things you'd like to deliver. So I know that we've, in the place director, have been looking at options to fund the footpath to Boston and also whether there are other links to it that could be used. So I think, yeah, it's definitely something that we're working on.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you, Dan, for your presentation. The actions for this report is the committee is invited to receive, consider and comment on the details of this report. And the proposal is, I move that we receive this report and request to receive further updates on the progress of delivery of the targets. Do I have a second, sir? Councillor Grikes, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Any against? Any abstentions? No, that's carried. Thank you very much indeed. Now, the last item on the agenda, and we've got 10 minutes to go, so thank you for your patience today, is the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Work Committee Programme. This item is on page 75 to 80 of the agenda pack. The item enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme. Over to you, Kieran.
Thank you, Chairman. As you correctly identified, this item enables the committee to consider and comment on the future work programme as this is developed and enhanced month by month. Members of the committee are invited to review the work programme and highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. I'm pleased to report that there haven't been any changes or amendments or additions since the time that this agenda had been issued, so no changes from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kieran. Any comments from members? No. Thank you very much. So in the actions, the committee is invited to review the work programme and highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages 75 to 80 and the additional items highlighted in discussion today. Are you all in agreement? That's good, that's carried. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's the 12:54. I thank you very much indeed for once again getting this meeting under the one o'clock deadline. It's been a very long meeting and a very enjoyable meeting. So thank you very much indeed and thank you for your patience. Thank you.